I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners for September 16th, 2015 to order. Clerk, can we please have the roll call?
Eleven present, one absent.
All right, that's great. Commissioner McDonough is still out of state at this point. I'll ask Commissioner Henderson to do the honors on the prayer and the pledge.
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point, I would open the microphone to any public comment on items that are on tonight's consent agenda. That, I believe, we've got quite a few folks tonight, so I'll just explain the process. If you're coming forward to speak on the agenda items such as the garbage proposal that's before us tonight, just state your name and your address here in Butte or Butte-Silver Bow City-County, and then try to limit your comments to three to five minutes. If somebody before you says something that basically encompasses everything you're going to say, if you can use that opportunity to not restate the facts that have already been presented, we'll move things along here pretty quickly. So with that, we'll open the microphone to public comments on the agenda this evening.
R. Edward Vanroth, 2601 Grand Avenue. Reference Section 1, Consent Agenda B, Communication Number 7, 15-433. R. Edward Vanroth, Enthroned Facilitator to the Neighborhood Community Coalition, requesting council to call for, authorize, and recognize community councils. Petition attached, recommendation note, and place on file. In that, as a member of the public, I was not allowed to speak during the discussion of the first communication on this issue with a petition attached with 74 signatures. Before you place it on file or place this second communication on file with a petition with 99 signatures, I would like to make the following comments relative to this council's response to the first communication and petition that are also relevant to this second communication and petition. First comment, only one-tenth of one percent. Possibly, this petition will raise that to two-tenths of one percent. But my question is, why should I have to be doing this in the first place? You are the ones that have been elected and took an oath to uphold the City-County Charter of Butte Silver Bow. I ask, have you asked 100 of your constituents and explained to them, Section 3.3 of the Butte Silver Bow Charter states, "The Council of Commissioners has the power and duty to authorize community councils to advise the Council of Commissioners"? And that this statute has been ignored for the past 10 years or more. Have any of you asked your constituents, "Do you prefer that we continue to ignore the constitutional law of this local government, or should we call for, authorize, and recognize community councils"? Of the second 110 residents I talked to, 90% prefer that this Council of Commissioners quit ignoring the Butte Silver Bow City-County Charter and start calling for authorizing and recognizing community councils to advise this Council of Commissioners on major policy issues. No phone calls. You should hear the published comments relative to the policy of just call your commissioner. Most of those comments I can't repeat in this chamber. The public, like myself, cannot understand how you can build a common consensus for a common solution to common concerns if you are not willing to gather together with the communities that have those concerns and discuss them. Not denied to come before this council. There is a very, very huge attitude gap between not being denied and then having a point-of-order called and not being allowed to speak, and calling for authorizing and recognizing advice from the public. Already serve on numerous boards and committees. Yes, we fully understand that you serve on numerous boards and committees. That is what you got yourself elected to do. But these, for the most part, are planning and administrative boards and committees, selected and appointed by the CEO, approved by this council. They are not, or should not be, policy determining committees and boards, as that is stipulated to be the power and duty of this council. Already hold public hearings. Yes, you hold public hearings after the how-to-do-it, the planning phase, after the fact, after the Ts and Is are dotted. You hold formalizing public hearings, which are required, no problem. But in a participatory democracy, you are leaving out the first step. You leave out asking the public, "Should we do this?", or for the public's opinion, and finding facts through listening sessions and town hall meetings. I have talked to over 300 people about this issue. Of those, over a dozen called the current procedure a dictatorship. This council has addressed this issue previously. No, you have not. As noted in my comments to the Judiciary Committee on September 9th relative to Section 3, Council Bill Number 14-8, Ordinance 14-8, and ordinance creating a new chapter in the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code to be entitled Neighborhood Councils, the county attorney has clarified that the Butte-Silver Bow City-County Charter calls for community councils, not for neighborhood councils. The current positions before you have been submitted requesting this council call for authorize and recognize community councils, an organized cluster of persons with a common interest and a common concern, not neighborhood councils, an organized cluster of persons from a defined place or area with boundaries. Therefore, myself and the signatories of this petition, 15-433, and the previous communication, 15-405, hereby again request that you refer this communication to the council's committee of the whole or this council's rules committee to determine a procedure by which to comply with the constitutional statute, Section 3.03-E of the Butte-Silver Bow City-County Charter. On a PS, reference to the Judiciary Committee Report, Section 3, Ordinance and Bill 14-8, although I concur that this should be filed, I question if you really want to deny it, because you're really going to be denying yourself. You voted 10 to 1 with one absent to send the Rules Committee proposal and recommendation for your county attorney to draft this ordinance.
Thank you. Other public comments?
My name is Mitzi Resilian, 815 West Granite, and I'm speaking concerning Section 4, Item 2, Ordinance 15-13. The role and responsibilities of government are complicated. Their elements of representation must be weighed by practicality and by program cost. Perfection has no place, but in fact, compromise yields results. For me, the best government may take all of those factors into account, but most importantly, it does what is best for the community as a whole going forward, present and future. It requires vision to do the right thing. I am not being overly dramatic when I say that the proposed garbage ordinance amendment is the right thing. I am so happy and proud to be a part of this community and am baffled by people who don't see what I see. For our neighbors and our visitors going forward, Butte must create and foster programs, ordinances, relationships, whatever, to weave a new fabric of progress and pride. And one of the threads of that fabric is a progressive and effective garbage control and collection program. Thank you in advance for doing the right thing.
Thank you.
There was just a nice man who mentioned that some of mine might be voluntary and not mandatory. I got most of my stuff from the newspaper. It says-
Your name and address, sir.
Hello?
Your name and address.
Oh, James Jones, P.O. Box 142 Ramsey. The reason I'm speaking up, because I feel like that whatever's happening here will eventually affect me. I'm in Silver Bow County. Commissioner Dan Foley, this is out of the paper. Commissioner Dan Foley, you said it certainly hasn't been ram-rodded down everybody's throat. We have been talking about this for a long time, and nobody can say that this hasn't been looked over thoroughly. And yet, after eight-month pilot program, nobody can, nobody on the council can tell anybody how much the basic cost of a household will be. This is about the garbage collection. I'm sorry. We will need a special 95, what? Okay. We will need a special 95-gallon trash can that can be picked up by a special truck with mechanical arms. And how will that work in a residential area with heavy street parking? And they were, I also read in the paper that they were thinking about going into the alleys, and I'm thinking, what about when it snows, they don't clear the alleys? How will that, are the cans to be provided free, or will there be a fee? You expect, okay, this is the part where I may be wrong, and it might have been voluntary, but that remains to be seen. You expect to pay $10 to $15 per month extra for recyclable pickups. That's 160 per year, and when you've got an old person or somebody that wants to recycle, that's a lot of money on top of the basic costs that you really don't know. We have a recycling center on the west side that's free right now. It probably isn't free, but it's free when you don't know where the money's coming from. You say their program must go out for bids. There is only one local company licensed to do the job. Do you intend to take this out of state or have out-of-state Sometimes, you know, because of the way the government's working nowadays, it's, we feel like, and it's a lot of people feel like that you think you can write blank checks with our money and just, you know, because this is a big deal. It's not just a little deal. You know what I mean? And you're the same folks that raised my taxes $200 in one year, and I didn't even get to vote on it. This is, so I'm asking that maybe you have a longer look at this. I know that you were talking about maybe having another meeting about this, and I hope you do that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, my name is Jim Becker, 381 Blackfield Canyon Road, Butte, here. And I'm here to go on record to oppose this garbage program. And if you decide to implement this new program, make sure you follow your oath of office. There are some of you, your constituents that will not be able to use this program, and there's others that will be burdened by this program and would rather opt out. When government takes property for services that a person can't use, that's theft. It's unethical, unjust, immoral, and you violate your oath of office. When any program is presented to the people and they don't have a choice whether to participate or not, that program is being shoved down their throats. It's wrong, and it's un-American. So make sure that people can opt out of this program and you don't take their tax money, their personal property. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Bob Worley. I live at 3405 Wharton here in Butte, Montana. And I just have a few brief words to say about this garbage system. I think it's the way to go. I think it's time to move Butte forward, the town forward into the 21st century. They do this in many, many communities across the United States. I'm pretty familiar with two of them. One in Salt Lake City, where I have a son that lives, and his garbage containers are put on the street. They're picked up weekly, both waste and also recyclables. I have another son in Ellensburg, Washington. That's a community of about 11,000 people. They do the same thing there. Nobody has any problems. I see a lot of good things coming out of this. Number one, it'll control litter on the streets, should keep the dogs and the pigeons and the ravens out of these cans. So it will help to control these kind of things. And over the long haul, especially with recycling, it's going to lengthen the life of our landfill and will save us taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Hi, my name is Sarah Bordune, and I live at 1127 Waukesha Street. I've been up here to talk about positive experiences with the garbage program because we're in the pilot program. And again, I have a family of five. We have the smaller container. It works for us. Sometimes we don't even fill it in the week because we're also using that recycling program. And it's cleaner in our alley. There's no question that it's cleaner in our alley. Some of our neighbors have actually removed their old garbage cans and the racks, and it looks really nice in our alley. I mean, it actually looks like it's a planned neighborhood. And I really like that effect. So that's uptown, right by Kennedy School on Estee Street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Tonette Hollingsworth, and I live at 503 West Galena. And I would like to support the Resolution 15-13 as well. I live in an area where there are several dumpsters that are placed right on the street. I have one directly across Kitty Corner from my house. I have a map of other dumpsters that are in my neighborhood. They are marked with a big green X. I only did five copies because I tend to be very resourceful. So, but I have pictures as well that I've taken of the dumpsters over quite a long period of time, because this has been a problem for me. My husband and I have watched dumpsters be placed. Over the last two years, we've had four placed around our house. And what happens is people that don't reside in our area maybe drop off couches. They drop off box springs and mattresses, and they're hanging out. If you go by my house right now, there's a couch hanging out of a dumpster. That's a problem for me. We bought a house that we restored. It was vacant when we bought it in the hopes of revitalizing our neighborhood. And so I'm going to ask you to support this ordinance for that reason. Sorry, if you want the map.
Thank you, Tonette. Other comments?
My name is Lena Worrell, and I live at 3000 Oregon here in Butte. And I would also like to support the garbage collection. I had the opportunity to go to college outside of Butte. When I graduated high school in Porterville, California, and we had these standardized containers that were picked up from our houses. Once a week, we wheeled them out Wednesday nights before we went to bed. When we came home from class at noon on Thursday, they were dumped. We wheeled them right back into our garage. It was simple to just open our garage door, throw our garbage in, and not have to worry about going out when it was dark out and it was storming, anything. It was just right in our garage, and we were able to wheel it out to the street when we needed to and then back in. I think it's a great idea, and it's going to make our community a lot cleaner and better-looking.
Thank you.
Chief Executive in council, my name is Michelle Ryan. I am at 4021 Paxton, and I would like to vote no for this garbage collection system. And I, you know, I just would like to vote no, because it's, I see the little people, the little old people not being able to handle it. I don't like the idea that it's a forced thing. You know, either you have to do this. I don't, I don't like that. That's too, too Russia. And so, please vote no.
Thank you. Any other public comment on tonight's agenda items? Thank you. Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of the minutes from our special meeting on August 31st and the regular meeting of September 2nd, 2015. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve the minutes that occurred on the special meeting, August 31st, 2015, and the regular meeting of September 2nd, 2015.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion? Nonsense. We do not have any agenda items to be added tonight. I have a couple of items on the chief executive report tonight. Starting with this month, I don't know how many folks had an opportunity to read an editorial that was in The Standard a few weeks ago by our state superintendent of schools, Denise Juno. But it was a, it was a good article on what some of the things are that we need to do to address graduation rates in Montana. And it was hinged on attendance primarily this year. If you haven't had an opportunity to check out Superintendent Juno's Graduation Matters for Montana initiative, it's certainly something worth reading. You know, you don't, might not think about it right out of the gate, but, you know, we have added a standing Economic Development Committee here amongst the council that meets a couple of times a month. Economic development issues are talked about fairly regularly up here. Some of the things, some of the best things and easiest things that we can do earliest in the lives of our citizens is doing whatever we can do to, to help promote their attendance at school and their graduation, because there's nothing that is a, that is a contributor to an economy, or on the flip side, a detractor to an economy than someone who graduates or doesn't graduate. And, you know, Butte, as well as the state of Montana, just because I think of our rural nature in a lot of cases, struggles like other states with more populated populaces may not necessarily have those issues. We have a pretty high dropout rate, although we have increased it to 85%. And so, I'll be, I've been working with Judy Joan Art in our, our public schools, as well as our, obviously, it applies to our private schools as well, to run with a proclamation and just continue to do everything we can do as a community to help foster graduation of as many of our, our high school students as, as possible, because it's not only what's best for them individually, it's also going to help Butte prosper, Silver Bow County prosper, and the state of Montana prosper. And so this Friday, I won't read this tonight, but this Friday at 11:30 up at Butte High School at the pep assembly that is being had at the Butte High School gym, it'll be themed on the Graduation Matters action, and I'll be reading a proclamation on behalf of our local government and our community to proclaim September and pretty much every day is Graduation Matters for, for Butte. And that's something that I think, you know, if you have kids, or if you have kids with kids, it's, it's not a lost cause or a waste of breath just to impart upon them how important it is to, to show up for school. Just missing a couple of times a month, and trust me, I got kids who do everything they can to come up with excuses not to go to school, but just two absences a month leads to what is determined as a chronic absence and can really affect a kid's performance and eventually their ability to graduate from high school. So, important event. Earlier this week, and I'm just kind of giving you an update on some of the things, we'll certainly be drawn upon additional things that were learned at this other event. Karen Burns and the new BLDC director Pam Haxby, Cody and I did take some time on Monday to make it over to Bozeman's Montana State University so we could attend Senator Steve Daines's High Tech Jobs Summit. There was a good collection of individuals and forward-thinking entrepreneurs from across the state of Montana and even beyond at the MSU campus. That day, we had some local business folks that were there. In fact, you may or may not recall, there was an individual that came before this body about a year or so ago by the name of Anthony Coconhour that was, applied for some assistance from the URA to get some assistance so he could locate his business in the Thornton Building. It was Hoplight Industries, a network security firm. He was, happened to be on, we weren't there for a lot of the summit, but he happened to be on the, the panel discussion on network security and internet economy when we were there. And so, obviously, anything we can do to attract those sort of high-paying, high-end, high-tech jobs are only going to, going to move us forward. And so, if you recall, we've, we've had some, some economic summits here that were formerly hosted by Senator Max Bockus up at Montana Tech in the past. It's been a couple of years since we've had any of those. And going to Senator Daines's High Tech Focus Summit has started the, the discussion on putting together the next economic summit here in Butte and what we can do there. So I'll, I'll report more on that as we move ahead. Another thing that I wanted to just let commissioners know about, we are, we've been partnering closer with our new historic preservation officer and working across multiple departments in our community enrichment and solving some of our community decay problems. Another issue that was talked about on our Economic Development Standing Committee earlier this evening. And one of them that was brought up was that we should probably, I mean, it's, it's a very good idea, not just to focus on the big things such as the Pizza Ranch or the Fairfield Inn, not that those aren't very, very important- Fairfield Inn, not that those aren't very, very important projects. And I'd love it if we had a groundbreaking like that every week, but trying to help some of the economically disadvantaged and individual homeowners well through, through our, our local government and the, the departments, namely Historic Preservation and Ed Randall's Community Enrichment Department, partnering with groups that, that have, have like-minded items on their agenda in the community. Citizens with Preservation, Citizens with Preservation and Revitalization this Saturday at 11 o'clock. I don't have the address. Mitzi, I see you out there. So what's the Alabama Street address?
315 North Alabama.
So 315 North Alabama. There's a, a lady who has a, an apartment building that has been in a state of incomplete painting job. And CPR has donated the, the paint, the materials, and we're looking for some additional volunteers to help this woman get her, get her home painted. And we hope it's something that'll spread to other homes in that community. It's right below the Anselmo Mineyard. So 11 o'clock on, on Saturday, this Saturday at 315 North Alabama, we'll be looking for some volunteers, even if you just want to stop by and check it out and take a look at that scale of the project. I know we're gonna, we're gonna have some of our folks there. There might be food if you, if you actually break a sweat. So just wanted to alert folks to that. And then we've been through some, you know, some trying times and we're in a tran, still in a transition period with our Parks and Recreation Department. I think our new Director JP Gallagher is doing an excellent job. And he's now going to be joined by our new Recreation or Recreation Coordinator and Special Events Coordinator was selected from a field of, I think it was 22 applicants. Bob Lazary, who has been working with Ed Randall's Community Enrichment Department, was selected as the top candidate among the applicants for that job. And so Bob or Laz, as I think most folks in Butte know him, will be starting, if he hasn't already started in that new capacity. And so I'm sure you guys will be meeting him as he comes before this, this body in the future. So that concludes my Chief Executive Report. We'll move into our consent agenda. So I'd ask for any friendly amendments or segregations. Fisher Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I would like to segregate in Communications B, number 715433 and number 1715443. Thank you.
What was the second one, Commissioner Fisher?
Number 171543.
What was the first one?
Number?
Seven.
Seven, okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Foley?
Thank you. Under Section 1A Personnel Committee, Committee Meeting Report, I'd segregate that.
Commissioner Perdue Dolan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Under the Communications, I'd like to segregate, let's see, number 1615-442. And under Section 4, Section Number, Section 4 Ordinance.
A4, Commissioner Perdue Dolan, is that?
Uh, one. Section 2, excuse me, Section 2, Number 2. Did you already segregate that? Which one? Um, section, Section 4, Number 2.
Section 4.
Where, where?
Section 4, Number 2. Yeah, that, that's not part of the.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. So you want to, I'm sorry. Did you segregate that?
Okay, any others?
Sorry.
No others, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve Section 1, 1A, 1 through 6, with the exception of Item Number 5 in the Personnel Committee Meeting Report. And Section B, Communications, 1 through 23, with the exception of Item 7, 15-433, Item 16, 15-442, and Item 17, 15-443.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Seeing nothing further on the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries will go in order. So Commissioner Foley?
Thank you. Just want to make one small change in the recommendation. The second sentence, it says hold in advance. I would like to leave the first and, and change that to place in suspense file. This issue is going to be worked on and we're not quite sure how long it'll take. So it's easier for Karen Esse to keep track of this. So we'll place it in suspense file. I'll make that as a motion or recommendation.
Certainly at a certain time.
No, just.
Okay, motion and a second to change the recommendation to place in the suspense file?
15-587.
Yeah, what was the communication number again?
Excuse me, it's Section 1, Communication 15-387.
Motion and a second. Anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Fisher, 15-433, R. Edward Vanderob, requesting counsel to call for authorized and recognized community councils. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Reason for segregation on this one is, is I'd just like to, you know, commend Ed. We've been through this so many times in the last few years. And you know, the very first proposal that was written by Cheryl Ralph at the Rules Committee was a good proposal for neighborhood councils and it failed. And I felt that was the one that was a ground-up instead of a top-down, which was what Ed and his people all wanted. The petition's great and everything's great, but we've worked on this so many times and went down. I would recommend to Ed and anyone that's interested in having neighborhood councils or community councils to get a group together and then come to the council and show us that you've got a group together that we can, you know, work with and recognize. But at this time, to review this one more time and not have any councils except for the Greeley Neighborhood Council that Ed is rounded up and done a very good job of, I would just like to see if other people are interested, get a group of eight or 10 people or three or four households together and bring this to us and then let us evaluate this situation. I commend Ed for his efforts and I stood beside him as long as we could fight this battle. And it's time now to note and place on file Communication 15433. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to note and place on file with the preface Commissioner Fisher gave. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication 15442, Chief Executive requesting counsel concurrence with the appointment of Lynn Anklman to the Board of Health. Commissioner Perdue Dolan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I just wanted to, I, I looked at the letter of request and I just wanted to ask what or about Ms. Anklman and what her credentials were. And I'm sure she's a fine candidate. I just didn't see any attachment to this letter. And if you could let us know what she does and a little bit of her background, that's what.
You know, thank you, Commissioner Perdue Dolan. She is a mental health professional that works for Western Montana Mental Health. I see our Health Director Karen Sullivan, who helped in the selection of these appointments. I, I don't know if you, if we want to expound on that, but.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chief Executive Vincent, Commissioner Perdue Dolan. For the record, I'm Karen Sullivan, Health Officer. Dr. Anklman holds a doctorate degree in education, but is also a licensed clinical professional counselor known in our biz as LCPC. She brings, when we conducted the 2014 Community Needs Assessment regarding health, mental health loomed as the number one issue in that collaborative process. And Dr. Anklman brings a wealth of knowledge to the mental health issue. And so we felt it would be very good to have her on our board. I wanted to clarify too, the letter indicated an Anaconda address for Dr. Anklman. She does reside in Silver Bow, but her male cluster apparently is located in Anaconda. So I did want to clarify that for anyone who was wondering.
She's out there in the Fairmont subdivision, so.
Thank you.
Anything further?
No.
No?
Thank you.
Would you care to make a motion?
Thank you. And thank you, Karen. So I, I would make a, a motion to concur and place on file. I think she's a wonderful addition. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to concur and place on file. Anything on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Communication 15-443, Dave Schultz, Public Works, requesting council authorization for a bid opening coming October 7th regarding solid waste collection. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. The reason for segregation of this is the October 7th bid opening. We had a bid a few weeks ago where we didn't have the proper publication. And I think a lot of these are getting to where we're pushing the bid opening and the communication pretty close together on a lot of these things. Also, on this communication having to do with the solid waste, I do understand that to expedite this process, whether it be standard containers or the pre-form, the style we use of garbage pickup right now, I do understand that. The thing I don't understand is with this communication and then the final reading of Community Ordinance 1513 tonight, I'm just concerned that in 1513's final reading, you know, I don't feel it's the same proposal that we had the first two readings as we're having tonight. So I'm not certain that this October 7th bid opening is too close, you know, to maybe what we're thinking. I realize that November is when we want to turn the wheel, but that's a concern of mine. And I would just like to hear a few other Commissioners' input if we did.
Do we, do we care to, care to ask Mr. Schultz to clarify or answer any questions for you, Commissioner Fisher?
I think he pretty much wants to have this done. I understand that. But my point is, is I'm not certain. So at this time, I would make a recommendation to move it back a few weeks and hold it in the Committee of the Whole then, which would delay our date of November 1st. But that would be my motion at this time. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I guess we might need a little more specificity on that rather than just a couple, few weeks, I believe you said, so.
If we're, thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. If we're to move the bid opening to the, to the 20, even the 14th would give us more time or the 21st would be better, but the 21st may be crowded. I'm just concerned about it because even when we done the fire truck bid, it was really close, you know, in the time. And one of the bids come in without a bid bond, so it left a sole source bidder on it. And what I'm concerned about is if we're going to open these bids and we're not certain about which program we're using until after tonight's meeting. There's just some concerns there, but I can live with the proposal on October 7th, but I would like to see it moved out to October 14th or October 21st. Thank you.
Okay, so which, which one, the 14th or the 21st?
The 14th would be fine. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion to move it up to, the bid opening up to October 14th and a second still. Commissioner Perdue Dolan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. When I, when I saw this on the agenda, I also had a concern that knowing that the, the dates and the concern with the, the rush and, and knowing that we were in a crunch, but I.
Just a pause for a second. Did you second his, his amended motion and now this is on the question?
Yeah. It just.
Amended motion?
The, his motion, yes. And I, I just wanted to make a comment that my, my concern with it being on the agenda was kind of putting the cart before the horse and making almost a, a statement, letting folks know that it was going to, almost saying it was going ahead. Does that make sense? Pretty much it was going to.
I, I understand your concern.
Yeah, so anyway, that's, that was what I was going to say. And with regard to the, the way garbage is going to be collected in Butte-Silver Bow and therefore then putting this on the agenda for solid waste collection and bids with regard to the, the cans. And so I think that's why Commissioner Fisher was saying, well, maybe we should put it back for a week or two. Thank you.
Okay, I'd call on Public Works Director Schultz. He's asking to be recognized.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, the, the date of October 7th was important in that probably three months ago, the council extended the solid waste collection contract that we currently have in place with McGree Trucking. And that contract presently expires on October 31st. So our effort has been to have a new contract in place by November 1st. The, the communication that I sent to the council said that whether you vote for or against the use of the containers, we would still recommend the October 7th date so that we can then recommend that you folks make an award on the 21st of October, which would then have everything in place for November 1st. We, we had, I think we shared this with the council in the past, we had a fairly complicated schedule that we had to abide by to get everything completed for this process. Nothing at all in our request presupposes what, how the council will vote. If you, if you folks decide to collect garbage the old-fashioned way, then we'll put together a bid package the old-fashioned way. We'll open those bids on October 7th. If you folks vote tonight to collect garbage the new way, we'll put together a bid package accordingly. But in either case, we'd recommend that we stick with the October 7th date. Otherwise, we'll have to come back to you if McGree Trucking is willing to extend the contract even further than November 1st to make it all work. And that was the thinking behind the communication.
Thank you, Dave. Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I was just going to say the same thing, that regardless if we approve or disapprove, communicate your resolution or Council Bill Number 15-13, we still have to go out for a bid opening anyway. So I'm going to make a substitute motion and, and schedule the bid opening on October 7th, 2015, and hold Communication 15-443 in the Committee of the Whole.
Second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion to schedule the bid opening on October 7th in the Committee of the Whole. Is there anything on the question? On the question, Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I do understand, I did read the letter thoroughly. My concern is that we aren't going to get anyone to bid except for a sole source bidder like we did on the fire truck. That is not a fair bid process when you only got a short term for bids to be opened. How can someone from another place submit a bid in that shorter time and then have the bids open and awarded in that shorter time? That was my concern. So at this time, I will withdraw my motion.
So anything else on the question?
I'll withdraw my second.
There's no, no need, just for the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. That concludes Section 1. Moving into Section 2, I would just ask to note those, those Ordinance 15-15, Resolution 1543 and Resolution 1544 refer to the judiciary. Section 3, Ordinances and Resolutions on Second Reading, Number 1. Karen Esse, can you please read the title?
Council Bill Number 15-14, Ordinance Number 15-14, An Ordinance Amending Section 2 of Butte-Silver Bow Ordinance Number 134 and Section 2.04.010 of the Butte-Silver Bow Municipal Code, Adjusting the Annual Salaries of the Chief Executive, County Attorney, Sheriff, Clerk and Recorder, Treasurer, Assessor, City Judge, Justice of the Peace, Auditor, Superintendent of Schools, Clerk of the District Court, Coroner, and Members of the Council of Commissioners and Providing for an Effective Date Hearing.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I move to place Council Bill Number 15-14, Ordinance Number 15- number 15-14, on second reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, this is a roll call, so please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Ten yea, one nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Section four, ordinances and resolutions for final reading. Karen Esse, can you please read?
Council Bill Number 15-12, ordinance number 15-12, an ordinance amending section 17.060.030 of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, which section adopted the zoning map of Butte Silver Bow, state of Montana, providing for a change to the official zoning district map by rezoning an area presently zoned R-1, one family residence zone to C-2, community commercial zone, the area of land consists of 2.58 acres, more or less, and is legally described as remainder dash two certificate of survey 796-b of section 19, township 3 north, range 8 west, of the PMM of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, state of Montana, generally located north of Olympia Street, south of Butte Town Center, and west of the 1300 block of Harrison Avenue, providing for the repeal of all parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, I move to place council bill number 15-12, ordinance number 15-12 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, this is a roll call, so please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Okay, resolution, excuse me, ordinance passes. Number two, Karen Esse, can you please read?
Council Bill Number 15-13, ordinance number 15-13, an ordinance amending chapter 8.08 entitled litter control of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code, specifically amending section 8.08.010, 8.08.020, 8.08.060, 8.08.070, and 8.08.80, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
I move to place council bill number 15-13, ordinance number 15-13 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the question, Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance number 15-13 as follows. On page three at line 25, after the word cost, delete the word of and insert the words to purchase the. On page three at line 26, and continuing on to page four to line four, delete the words as well as the monthly fee for the pickup of each additional container. The monthly fee to collect each additional container shall equal the cost of the monthly fee assessed for collection of the first container. Thank you.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay, we have amended motion to the proposed ordinance and a second, as noted. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, at this time, I would like to delay the approval of that amendment until we have time to review it, because I have some questions about fourplexes and sixplexes and eightplexes that use six and eight containers versus a one, single family household uses one container, and I think that kind of very, is kind of a lopsided option when you do that, because one container might hold one bag of garbage where a sixplex might have 10 containers, and they both have one tax bill, so at this time, I'd make a motion that we hold off on that amendment until we review it further. Thank you.
You want to hold it in advance?
Yes.
Do you want to send it back to judiciary?
Okay, the motion is to send it back to judiciary. Okay. Okay, we have a motion to send it back to judiciary and a second. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner Ralph?
I was wondering if Mr. Schultz could clarify for us, I believe that a six and eightplex is a commercial building and that they don't use the residential garbage collection systems, is that correct?
Mr. Schultz?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ralph, members of the council, up to a sixplex is considered household, and that is part of the garbage collection district. Anything above a sixplex is considered commercial and they contract separately for their garbage pickup. The effect of the amendment that Mr. Walker just read is to remove the additional monthly charge for additional containers. The effect of it is, is that if a household desires a second container or a third, they must pay the cost of procuring the container, but there will be no additional monthly charge for dumping the container.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Schultz. Is there anything further on the question? Commissioner Sorge?
Thank you, Mr. Chief, you know, I'm just going to make one quick comment. You know, through this whole process, I'm hearing Mr. McGree's, the McGree saying more efficient, how do I argue that they're the experts of picking up the garbage? I'm hearing people say, keep it cleaner, I'm hearing people say, more, you know, moving forward, I'm hearing, I have heard a few negatives, I don't know how we can argue against this, I think we've got to move it forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Sorge. Commissioner Fisher, did you solve something?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, excuse me, my point is, single family household has one container, they pay one tax bill. A sixplex, sixplex might need eight or 10 containers, they pay one tax bill. So by this new amendment, what I'm stating here is, a sixplex that has 10 containers is paying the same amount for garbage pickup as a single household is paying for garbage pickup, whether it be $95 a year or $115 a year or $86 a year. The sixplex is getting a pretty good buy compared to an elderly couple or a single household. That's my point.
Well stated, and I'm glad that's not true, but I'll let Mr. Schultz clarify, so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fisher, the garbage collection district is configured such that a sixplex pays six units of garbage, on their taxes, they're assessed six units. Fourplexes assessed four units, and so they pay the commensurate fee based upon the size, the number of units.
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Schultz, at this time, I withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Okay, so that, we're doing, we need a withdrawal of the second if you so choose, Commissioner Perdul.
I'd like to withdraw my second and also like to make a quick comment as well.
Yes, on the question to the previous motion, so yes.
Yes, and I'd like to say too, with regard to Commissioner Sorge, with regard to the garbage and the collection, I would just say, as far as picking up the garbage and the new way, I think it all comes down to enforcement and the picking up the garbage and folks, we've talked on and on about this, but we have with this litter control ordinance, and Mr. Schultz was great in presenting several presentations from the old ordinance and updating it for us, but it all goes back to the ordinance for Butte Silver Bow. If you take the time to read it and look at it, there are, right now, 19 penalties and nine departments who have authority to enforce litter control throughout our county, and a lot of personal responsibility to pick up litter in our own neighborhoods and around our own properties. So I would just say that do the right thing and pick up your garbage and put it in the right container, and that would make Butte a much better place to live, a beautiful Butte, Montana, and that would save a lot of cost and effort on all of our parts, and if we enforce the laws that are on the books currently, that would save a lot of time and money for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further on the question, Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, could I ask Mr. Schultz, maybe I'm not reading the right one here, but on the new, on G, it says recyclables are still have useful physical or chemical properties after serving, and so on and so forth, and H down there, could you please tell me, is that the new revised? Because I didn't get the new revised, if that's, if there's a new one.
Mr. Schultz?
I was reading through this, and Dave, I think it, on H there, G and H, has that been taken out, or why is that in there, recyclables in this?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Henderson, members of the council, it is in there, the quick answer is that, we had a lot of discussion about whether we should take these definitions out or not. We did remove the entirety of 8.08.110, which was entitled curbside recycling, so that couple of pages of this ordinance was deleted when you folks met last Wednesday. So the entire recycling provision that would involve Butte Silver Bow was taken out. We left in the definition of recycling and recyclables because we still intend for a Butte Silver Bow to be involved with the three pickup sites, and we thought it would be useful to define in the ordinance what recyclables are with respect to what can be dumped at those recycling sites, and so that's why we left those definitions in, but everything else to do with BSB involved in recycling was taken out.
Follow up?
Follow up, Mr. Chief Executive, Dave, you confused me here, because what do you mean you got involvement in recyclables? I thought the recyclable business took off to Mr. McGree and Mr. Aware.
Mr. Chief Executive, Commissioner Henderson, the curbside recycling program that we did the pilot program for and that Butte Silver Bow had contemplated being involved in, that we have backed away from, and that will be conducted by McGree Trucking and Aware, a combination of those two qualified firms. We presently sponsor those three pickup sites by NCAT, by the Civic Center at the corner of Platinum and Excel. It's our intent that Butte Silver Bow will continue to sponsor the pickup at those three sites, so people in our community who do not wish to pay for curbside recycling, or who would rather take their own recyclables to a drop off center still have that option. So the definitions that we left in here for recyclables and recycling will help us to be able to define what can be dumped at those locations. That help?
That helps.
Very good. Commissioner Perdul?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Mr. Schultz, I have a question, though, if the curb 8.08.110, if this stays in the litter control ordinance, does that not then keep Butte Silver Bow into recycle, curbside recycling, if for some reason, the private recycling goes, for lack of a better word, goes under with what happened in Anaconda, and they closed their doors, and that happens for some reason in Butte Silver Bow, and Butte is then, the county is then asked to bail them out, and then this is in the ordinance, then they can say, well, it's in here in writing, here we are.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Perdul, the entirety of 8.08.110 has been deleted, it was deleted last week, so there is no longer any section or any obligation of this county to be involved in curbside recycling.
Follow up?
So, the only thing, but you just said that it has been left, some things have been left in for the bins that are sponsored by Butte Silver Bow, what has been left in is what then? Because you just said something was left in for the bins that we do sponsor.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Perdul, we left in, under section 8.08.010 definitions, we left in, we had added initially, a definition G, which is for recyclables, and a definition H for recycling, and so we thought we would leave those in because they define what can be placed in those containers, but nothing about having those definitions obligates Butte Silver Bow to have any kind of a recycling program, it simply defines what a recyclable is.
Commissioner Ralph?
Thank you. I'd like to just clarify with our county attorney, I don't believe that defining, by defining a word, we obligate ourselves to providing any services, is that correct, please?
County attorney?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ralph, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, nothing further on the question, this is a roll call vote, so please, we are voting on the first motion that was made, and the amendments as read into the record by Commissioner Walker to remove those additional charges, so.
So this is just on the amendment then?
No, this is on. This is on the ordinance as amended per Commissioner Walker's amendments.
Wouldn't we have to vote on the amendment first?
No, no, because he specifically read what those amendments were and how the ordinance was to be amended. I'm getting the affirmative from our county attorney on this.
That is for the county attorney.
Okay, so please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Eight yea, three nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Resolution 1522, clerk, can you please read the title?
Resolution number 15-22, a resolution granting conditional approval of the preliminary plat of the Aspen Lane Minor Subdivision of the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, state of Montana, providing for the repeal of all parts of resolutions in conflict herewith and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, at this time, I move to place resolution number 15-22 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Nothing on the question? Roll call, so please cast your votes. All in, please record.
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Okay, resolution passes. Section five, we have a suspension of the rules for final passage, Commissioner Shaw?
The suspension of the rules for the purpose of passing council resolution 15-42 by waiving subsection seven of rule 36 of the Rules and Order of Business of the Council of Commissioners, thereby having it considered for advanced passage without reference to the judiciary committee.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules for final passage. Please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Okay, rules suspended, number one, Karen Esse, can you please read?
Resolution number 15-42, a resolution authorizing and approving the sale of certain parcels of tax-deeded real property owned by the city and county of Butte Silver Bow, state of Montana, and providing for an effective date herein.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, I move to place council resolution 15-42 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, I see nothing on the question, so please cast your vote. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
Eleven yea, zero nay.
Okay, resolution passes. At this point, is there any public comment on items that were not on tonight's agenda?
Yep, yep. That band around 26 along Grand Avenue. I would like to clarify a point in that you did not remember Jim Jarvis's previous presentation relative to the $30,000 to prepare the special resource study for National Heritage Area. His comment was, I hope I have it right, it would take 100,000 to 200,000 to have the National Park Service do the study. thousand to have the National Park Service do the study. Whether that's the cost of being, of admission, I don't know. He also said that, in that, we already have three studies done, about fifty thousand apiece. It would only take about twenty to thirty thousand to put them into the format necessary to submit the proposal to the National Park Service. So that's where the twenty to thirty thousand came from. I would also like to clarify that a national heritage area is not a government program. There is not a program that brings money to this government. It is a program that brings money to a community council, five oh one C three, that would be able to proportion it out for preservation and promotion. I would also like to point out that personally, I feel we have our priorities backwards. Elizabeth Warren, the heritage tourism consultant that came here in twenty twelve, made the suggestion that we use our present heritage tourism assets that we already have and promote them. Yes, we need to do some in-house organizing, but it's not necessary to wait three to five years. Thank you.
Other public comments, sir?
Yeah, my, excuse me, name's Edward Pape, and I live at seventeen fourteen Harrison Avenue. And I was here, I don't know, about the third week in August, and it was sad for me to see that you all get paid because I didn't think you did. I didn't get any reaction from my commissioner. The only commissioner who's ever contacted me was Christine Hall a long time ago. I had what I considered pretty serious concerns and thought somebody would address them. Maybe I'm going about it wrong. Maybe I don't know the public way you go about bringing the council or our local government concerns, but I see my commissioner Brendan McDonough is not here. But I'd like to find out how I bring these concerns and get answers to my questions that I brought to the meeting in August. One of which was all the money that you guys tend to give away to people from out of state when I've had a business here for eighteen years, and all you've given me is headaches. You've given money to Uptown Butte bars that you don't provide for me as far as festivals. I've used all my 401K. I've got high credit card debt, so I want to thank you for giving me that, but I would prefer the fifty thousand that I asked for at the meeting I attended before. There are three of you that voted no on several of those because you knew it would be unfair to, businesses have been in Butte for a long time. So I exclude those three. I know you were one, and there was a couple others. I also asked a question about who sells alcohol at the National Folk Festival, and now I guess it's the Butte Silver Bow Folk Festival. And I know you can't communicate back, but as we all know, nonverbal, seventy percent of communication, and I thought your head was going to spin off there when you were shaking no, but you didn't bother to call and tell me that Butte Silver Bow doesn't sell the alcohol. I still don't know who does, and I would like to know that. So if anybody could communicate, or if Mr. McDonough would go through the minutes, hopefully he'll respond and I can get some answers to some of these questions. Again, I brought up the fifty thousand dollars that Paul Bab accidentally gave without any authorization to McKenzie River. I don't know how many of you know this, but they sold after they were given that fifty thousand dollars. And now I think they're part of this pizza ranch you gave another fifty-seven thousand dollars to. And I'm not sure on the facts of that, but I'm fairly certain. And then I heard, I don't know if they're still going to build this little pizza ranch thing or not, after you've already paid the money to tear and level the property off. But again, I've been paying taxes as a businessman in this city for eighteen years, much more than I think is fair. I think property taxes here are way, way higher than they should be. I've had to use all my 401K to pay them over the years, and I'm tired of you giving money away to just anybody and not following up on what happens to it. I'd like to know how I go through that process, find out where that money's being spent, if it was given. I asked about the fifty thousand the Thompsons was granted, yet I don't know if they ever got it or not, because instead of building the fifty, what they asked the fifty thousand for, they moved out to the old Safeway warehouse, and now they sold their business. But I never got an answer to that question. A lot of questions I'd just like to get some answers on. So if I'm going about it wrong, and by coming up here and talking to you, before I was emotional, I'm not emotional anymore. I'm angry, to be honest with you, because these are my tax dollars that you tend to just throw, throw away. So I'd like some answers. I would appreciate it very much if somebody would communicate to Mr. McDonough on how I go about officially getting answers to my questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Babe.
Just a general comment on how Butte taxes are gotten.
Your, your name and address for the record?
Kevin Lowning, sixteen oh four Silver Bow Homes. Our tax, taxes in Butte come from Butte homeowners, and there's been a general idea, starting in the beginning of the Bab administration, continuing on today, that we need to increase our tax base by attracting more people to come to Butte. I personally live on a fixed income. I don't want to see that happen because if we do that, it'll drive me out of this town. I won't be able to afford to live here, and I think that's true for a lot of Butte residents. So I'm not pro-growth. But ironically, the idea of spending money on things that are going to attract people from the outside to come here is working against us. It's even worth working against what you're trying to do, because what you're doing is taxing people out of their houses, current, long-term Butte residents with family history, generational, down generation, down a generation, who are now senior citizens who own their houses, a lot of them living on a fixed income. Also, on the other end of the scale, I'm not talking about rich people, by the way, I'm talking about the average Butte person, which there's a lot of poverty in this town. People are renting. It's not the landlords who pay the taxes. They pass it on to the renters. And continually spending money on things to attract people from outside to come in, or even salaries for people who already make a good salary, and increasing taxes, I think you're defeating your purpose. I think you're defeating what you're trying to do. You're taxing people out of their houses, out of their apartments, and out of Butte. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, Skidder? Any other public comments on non-agend items? Seeing none, we'll move into the calendar of other meetings and events to take note of. Does anyone have anything to add on that? Okay, seeing none, we move to a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Nothing on the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Meeting adjourned.